Okay, we're gonna call to order the September 25th, 2023 Rochester City Council meeting to order. Madam Clerk, the role please.
Bixson.
Yes.
Salvia.
Here.
Albrecht.
Present.
Gould.
Here.
Peterson.
Here.
Sage.
Here.
Trent.
Here.
Thank you. Would you please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody, for coming tonight. Oh, still fallish night. We are going to public comment, scheduled, non-scheduled, but before we get going on that, I have a statement to go through, and I think maybe some other council people as well. So, I think the issue that everybody in town is hearing about is the marijuana dispensary thing that's gonna be on the November ballot. So I just wanna kinda clarify some issues on that and then give my own personal opinion. So in 2018, City Council, your elected leaders, voted not to let in marijuana dispensaries, in a unanimous vote. So we voted up here, your representatives, not to have medical dispensaries into Rochester, with the understanding that marijuana is legal in the state of Michigan. Outside business interests paid people to gather signatures and put this measure on the ballot, which they are allowed to do. City Council had no say in this at all. It did not come to City Council. It was put on the ballot. That is legal, and our city attorney has advised us that there is nothing the City Council could do. If this ballot passes, there's going to be three marijuana dispensaries in our downtown, and there's nothing that this City Council can do about it. Nothing. Okay? I believe, in my personal opinion, now, I'm speaking as a citizen of Rochester, that there will be three things. There will be increased traffic to our downtown, which we know right now is an issue. There will be increased security issues, and there will be extra cost to the city that goes along with that. But the nice thing about this is the people of Rochester, the people who live here, all of us, we can stop this. People who live in Rochester like us, like people watching tonight, we can stop this and have the people run things as opposed to big business run things. I believe we need to rise up as people who live in Rochester and defeat this ballot proposal. Let's tell big business, this is our city, not theirs, and in my opinion, we should vote no on this issue. Thank you. Now I'd like to recognize Mayor Protem Salvia.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. So this is my personal opinion, as well as, quite frankly, the vast majority of people that I have spoken with. I do not support the ballot proposals to change our ordinances and our charter, mainly due to the negative impact of traffic of 500-plus cars per day per retail establishment. To kind of reiterate some of the things that the mayor has said, City Council has not taken action on these proposals because we could not, as they were submitted following the legal guidelines, but the city is not permitted to take any action to modify, et cetera, them, but receive and submit to the Attorney General's Office for the vote of the Rochester residents in November. The City Council in the past has taken action to pass the current ordinance, which does not allow retail marijuana dispensaries in the city of Rochester. This issue is now in the hands of the voters of Rochester to decide, and quite frankly, they need to decide for all of our neighbors. I've heard from many of our neighboring communities, Rochester Hills, Shelby Township, Oakland Township, and they wish they could vote. So, city of Rochester residents need to vote for the entire area because we are there downtown. So, key point, the city has received four letters of intent for retail stores in Rochester, and the locations are right in our downtown. Common sense says, if passed, there will be three right in downtown. Not zero, not one, not two, but three. I'm often asked, why three? Three was set by both the state of Michigan, based on population, and on the specific language in the ballot proposals drafted by an outside group. So lastly, while these petitions and ballot proposals were generated legally to be put on our ballot, my opinion is they were drafted by a group of people without residents, without our resident input, without city input, without city council input, without planning commission input. We were not asked. This is not our normal process, and wouldn't it be better for our community to follow our normal process and allow a better solution, which is typically made through collaboration? So, at this point, the Rochester residents need to decide and educate themselves and decide and vote. Thank you.
Councilmember Gould.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have any prepared remarks, and I think the Mayor, Mayor Protem, said everything that needed to be said very eloquently. I will say that I am personally going to vote no on this. I think this is a bad idea for our Main Street. I do think we have an obligation to the surrounding area to keep our Main Street approachable, accessible. It will increase traffic, there's absolutely no doubt about that. I think it will greatly change, has the potential to change the complexion of our city and of our Main Street. As Mayor Protem Salvia said, the system didn't work exactly as it should, but we still have a chance as voters. Democracy in progress. You have to vote, vote, vote on this, and let the people be heard and make the decision. Thank you.
Councilmember Peterson.
Thank you, Mayor. So, I'm going to start with my statement that I took an oath eight years ago when I was sitting here, and my oath was to follow local, state, and federal, and because this is federally illegal, I will be voting no. So, that's how I stand with that. I do hope that all residents vote based on how they feel about the situation, because they're the ones who will have to live here. So, that's all I'm going to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Trent.
Yes, again, this is my personal opinion and feelings about these two proposals. This is not about whether I, or I've heard from others, as I've been knocking on doors, whether you're for or against marijuana. I am not against marijuana use, and nine out of people tell me they are not against the usage either, but what they're telling me is they are against three stores within close proximity being in downtown Rochester. And these are the reasons why I'm against it, because the ballot proposals do remove not only local control of our elected officials, but also of city residents. As Mayor Protem and Salvia and our Mayor Bixson said, it was an outside company that paid for the petition, wrote the language to their benefit, and chose the locations, and this is perfectly legal. But, I was asked by some people when I was knocking on the doors, if the City Council, the city attorney, or the city manager could have done anything. The answer is no, and here are the reasons why. We're a town of 13,000 people. Because of our small size, you only need 360 signatures to get a ballot initiative to change an ordinance, and only 560 to change the city charter within that amendment of which they did. If these proposals are voted down, this can still come back in two years. Some people have asked, they said, "Well, can't the City Council change it if it passes?" No, that's where the big no is. So, if we get, let's say, two-thirds or overwhelmingly amount of people to say no, to vote against it, that will send, be a major deterrent for them to come back to put this on the ballot again in two years. In other words, it's expensive, and they may not, they may see an overwhelming amount of noes. Will make the companies and other companies think twice, even though there's an inordinate amount of money that can be made from having dispensaries, and especially in our downtown, I think in small towns where a lot of people come. So this is a perfect way for the people of Rochester to vote and make their vote count and make their voices be heard. I also agree that the second thing that, in the neighborhood I was in, which was on Woodward and Drace and Griggs, on the side of the town where these stores will be, they were very concerned about traffic congestion. Many of them said they would be moving. It's up to, what I have learned, it's up to 1,500 cars daily will be on North Main Street. And also, people do concerned about ensure, safety, and security, although they heard they do have extra security, the stores do, but there's a lot of cash being transferred, transferred, and it can increase theft. So, for these reasons, I am against both proposals, but I would like to commend our city. They put this in a newsletter that came out, and they were very clear on several things: how to vote, how to vote early, how to vote absentee, and they have the proposals right here, and you can go to rochestermi.org/505/balance to read the ordinances yourself, to actually read them. They are bit lengthy, it's all legalese, but they're very, very, very important if you read them. Thank you very much.
I'd just like to say real quickly, the city is not taking a position pro and con. These comments tonight are as private citizens. Councilmember Albrecht.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have prepared remarks. I'm gonna speak from the heart like I always do. I'm gonna speak as a father, I'm gonna speak as a grandfather, I'm gonna speak as a resident, I'm gonna speak as a neighbor, I'm gonna speak as a friend. When this came before me, I thought back to my days as DDA chairman, working with Kristi and her team, and all volunteer board members. We talked about our historic downtown, our roots, and our plans for the future. I never thought the plans for the future would include three medical, or three marijuana dispensaries in our downtown, for all the reasons that have been articulated up here, the traffic. I can't imagine taking my granddaughters to Dairy Queen, which is always a tough intersection as it is, and have 500 additional cars going in and out on that street. It's just, it's not gonna be safe anymore. Our Main Street, any of us who go up and down, you know that our Main Street connects all the communities north of town with people going to work south of town, add 1,500 cars, and you can just imagine what that's gonna be. I, again, personally, these are my personal opinions, I am going to vote no on these, both of these proposals. I encourage all, and I've been, I'm not campaigning for reelection like some of my fellow council people up here, people in the audience who are running for office, but I've been around town, and I've not heard anybody, and I've probably spoken with about 50 people, say, "Oh, this would be a great idea." The revenue that they articulated in the letter that some of us received was a bit misleading, because it'll be offset by additional security for police work and other kinds of things that are going to impact us. I always think back to when you have bullies on a playground. Bullies try to, you know, bully other people, take their lunch money and everything else. The bully in this case is the big businesses that have more money than we have, and they're coming in and picking on little Rochester, 13,500 residents, because they think they can. How do you stop a bully? You punch him in the nose, figuratively, not literally. And I think we can punch the business in the nose by voting no on both of these proposals. So I will be voting no, and I hope that all of our residents here in the audience today listening, or who have read the information sent out by the city, will read the proposals and join me in voting no. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Sage.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I personally will be voting no on both proposals, and I won't reiterate what my colleagues have said. They've said it succinctly, and I'm sure the message was delivered to you correctly. What I want to implore the electorate is one thing. There were enough people in Rochester to sign a petition to put this on the ballot. It is now imperative that the rest of us as citizens make that decision then. If you do not want this in town, then simply vote no on the proposal.
Thank you. As we said earlier, we are small, but we are mighty, and I believe we can get this done. Council, Mr. Hauser, would you like a comment?
Mr. Mayor, Madam Mayor, Protem, and the other members of City Council, good evening. My name is Christian Hauser. My wife and I live at 5157th Street. You have articulated very well many of the things I was gonna state, so I'm gonna be a little bit redundant on here unintentionally, but if you will indulge me, I think this is a matter of significant importance that is worth hearing. As you guys were mentioning before you, or before the voters this fall, is going to be two ballot proposals, and if passed, they will essentially do what you had said. They will lift the ban on the prohibition of marijuana sales in the city of Rochester, and they will allow up to three stores in the principal shopping district, anywhere that's owned retail. Okay? And that area extends up in north, up and down north, South Main Street, and then east to Royal Park, and then west to the former school administration building. I understand that it's all zoned retail, and that could be a possible place for some of these locations. To be clear, subject to certain restrictions on quantities mandated by the state of Michigan, it is perfectly legal to consume marijuana in Rochester. It's perfectly legal to possess marijuana in Rochester, and it's perfectly legal to purchase marijuana from a dispensary located out of the city limits and bring it back to your house. In fact, it's perfectly legal to grow it in Rochester, but what you can't do is go buy it at a store in Rochester. Nevertheless, as we have said, an outside group from Saginaw is funding an effort to change our city charter. So there's more, no understanding, misunderstanding. I am fully aware that people of all ages, from all socio-economic backgrounds, use marijuana for both recreational and medicinal purposes. This is not a criticism or an attack on anyone who lawfully uses marijuana. My objections, frankly, to these ordinances, or the proposed ordinances, frankly, to change, are not based on health, moral, or pre-ortainical grounds. Rather, my concern, and that of many others that I have also spoken to throughout the neighborhoods, deals specifically with the proposed locations of these three establishments, should these proposals pass. That is it. And now, supporters of these proposals are certainly entitled to their own opinions, they are not entitled to their own facts. And I think I'd like to spend a few moments debunking some of these proposal-ness that are out there, if you would give me just a moment. So number one, and this was said by the City Council, the city can just put these dispensaries somewhere else if they don't want them on Main Street. False. The city would not be able to do anything other than allow them to be put on Main Street or in anywhere that's located or zoned retail. It is completely out of the city's control where those go. They can't shove them down on South Street, they can't put them over on Letica. They would be somewhere on Main Street, or University, or somewhere else that's zoned retail. The city has no oversight on that. Misconception number two, there will be little, if any, increase in traffic. Again, patently false. At September 7th, city administration presented to the planning commission what was expected of these stores should they open with respect to volume of vehicles. Each store was estimated to be 500 to 600 vehicles per day. Times by three, you've got 1,500 to 1,800 cars traveling up and down Main Street between the hours of 9:00 a.m. and midnight, because that's when the hours of operation would be. Okay? If anyone thinks that these numbers were manipulated, or puffed, or propagandized by some, you know, committee who doesn't want these, please, go watch the video. September 7th, planning commission, 52-minute mark, you will hear everything you need to know about the increase in traffic. And speaking of planning commission, I have been in meetings when residents have come in insanely upset about increase of 100 cars on a project, okay? Why people are not coming in here with torches and pitchforks peacefully protesting that there is going to be three dispensaries within a quarter mile of one another is mind-blowing, and I think it's because it's awareness. And my job today, hopefully, is to get the message out to people who live on Albertson, who live on Griggs, who live on Drace, who live on these streets, who are going to be immediately impacted by this if it passes. Misconception number three, these new businesses will bring much-needed tax revenue to the city. False. Absolutely false. Now admittedly, there will be some generated revenue that comes in that we otherwise didn't have, but each store might have $50,000 to $60,000. If you go and spend some time looking at the general fund that's by the city, that is less than 1% of the money that the city operates on. In fact, the city earns more in revenue on the interest it earns on the investments it keeps, okay? So it's ridiculous to think that our new roads, our new streets, our new sidewalks are going to be funded by income from these dispensaries. Our taxes are not going to come down. Our costs are actually going to go up, because as the mayor said and other members of City Council, the burden on the infrastructure, the burden on public safety, the burden on the traffic is going to diminish the life and use of the roads and sidewalks, et cetera, and it's only going to come out of our pockets. The people in Saginaw aren't paying for this, the people who own those buildings aren't paying for it. Everyone who lives and owns a house in Rochester is going to pay for it. Misconception four, surrounding businesses will see an uptick in sales because of these dispensaries. Again, patently not true or supportable by evidence. On September 7th, city administration came in front of the planning commission and said the average visit of a customer at one of these dispensaries is 20 minutes, and the average spend is $80, okay? If anyone thinks that these people are then going to get in their car and drive up and down Main Street and frequent these stores and the shops and the restaurants, is out of their mind, there is nothing to support that whatsoever. They come in, they get their stuff, and then they leave. Okay? Number five, no additional burden on city resources. Again, I've talked about that. Additional police officers, possibly two, $80,000 to $110,000 each. And this is, two more here. Misconception number six, beer, wine, and alcohol are legal and sold in Rochester, and Rochester just doesn't want marijuana stores. That's, again, patently false. Using legality as a litmus test as to whether or not something should be permitted in the city is a non-starter. There's lots of things that are legal in the state of Michigan that we don't have here, okay? For example, not to be crude, adult entertainment bars are legal in Michigan and Rochester. We don't have them, okay? We don't have three strip clubs on Main Street. We don't have fireworks stores. We don't have fast food stores. There's no McDonald's, Wendy's, or Burger King on Main Street. Just because they're permitted doesn't necessarily mean they're good for the particular city. These proposals take away the right from the city and its residents to designate where dispensaries or dispensaries should be located. We're letting an outside group who live 90 miles away decide how we should run our city, rather than the people who live here and work here and own property here and pay taxes here, and that's not right. And finally, misconception number seven, Rochester doesn't want people to have access to marijuana, or we need dispensaries because residents in Rochester can easily get marijuana. This is the most easily debunked argument possible. There are stores within seven and a half miles from here. There's one in Lake Orion, there's two in Utica, okay? As I said earlier, it's perfectly legal to own, consume, grow marijuana in Rochester. The police officer is not going to arrest you for drug smuggling if you buy it in Utica and come back here and use it, okay? It's perfectly legal. No one is trying to prevent residents, and if you have mobility issues, they will deliver it for you. I called today, three stores, Lake Orion, five bucks, Utica, eight bucks. The other one, it's $8 delivery fee on orders, I'm sorry, free delivery on orders over 75 bucks. If you want a pizza from Green Lantern, it costs $4.99 and it takes an hour. I promise you, I could call right now and get cannabis delivered to me before this meeting adjourns tonight. That's how easy it is to get. Any idea that this is somehow trying to restrain access, or limit access, or deny access is patently false. I'm almost done, I promise you. I've had the good pleasure of going to some of these visiting sessions that the DDA puts on. We sit at round tables and we talk about what would the city want? What could we do for the city that would make this place better? Parks, entertainment centers, the front porch project, venues for entertainment, farmer's market enhancements. You know what's never once been said at any one of those breakout sessions? Three marijuana dispensaries would be fantastic on Main Street. Never once heard that, because anyone who lives here knows that that concept, that notion of having three marijuana stores in Main Street or in our downtown is banana land. And I can't even comprehend that we're even having this debate, not because of anything that's been said or done, but because someone clearly doesn't live here and thinks this is a great idea. It is not. So, I hope everyone sitting in this room and watching at home takes this very seriously. As Commissioner Sage said, it's one thing to put signs in your front yard, it's one thing to go to meetings, it's one thing to talk to your neighbors, but the most important thing you can do is go to the ballot and vote no on both of these proposals. There is no excuse not to vote. Call Leanne, she will tell you how to do absentee. There's eight days of early voting, you come here and vote, or on November 7th, you go to your proper precinct and vote. There's three issues on the ballot, City Council and these two proposals. It should take you about 90 seconds to do what you need to do. There is no excuse. And if this fails, meaning that if it passes, we have no one to blame but ourselves. Everyone should know about this, and I'm committed to making sure that everyone in this city knows how important it is to vote no on these. So thank you very much for taking and allowing me the time to talk to you, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have a call up here first. Brian, we have a hand raised?
Yes, there's one caller ending in 651, if you'd like to unmute.
Hi, I'm just waiting for public comment.
Ms. Turner, you're up.
I agree with no marijuana sales in Rochester. Well, I'm going to put you back on mute.
Further comments?
Hello?
Are you, Ms. Turner, do you want to speak? Ms. Turner?
She's on mute. She's on mute.
Okay.
Hi.
Do you want to speak?
Are you hearing me?
Yes, we are.
Okay. I wanted to address public comment, but I agree with the no vote. So I'm going to put myself back on whole, mute, and I'll talk to you in a few.
Okay. Further comments? And please introduce yourself for the record.
How you doing? My name is Davros Toma. I own several retail establishments in the state of Michigan. I was not a part of this ballot initiative, wasn't a part of gathering the signatures. However, I am in favor of having marijuana in Rochester, but only at the community's benefit. You know, if Main Street is not the right place for it, what you can do now to help defeat this is consider an ordinance now that puts them where you want them to be, and those of us that agree with your ordinance will help try and defeat this current ballot initiative. It's a, I understand that Main Street's gonna create some traffic issues, but you can't put them on South Street, you can't put them on the other industrial street, I think it starts with that, I forgot the name of it, but.
Letica.
Letica, yep. But we're here for the community benefit. We're not here to push something on you. Like I said, I wasn't part of this ballot initiative, but when something comes up for cannabis, you know, we tend to want to participate in it. But there is definitely something you can do. You can consider an ordinance now, putting it where you want, and those, like I said, those that agree with it will help fight this initiative. These guys are gonna come back, and they don't have to wait two years. They can come back in February for the presidential primary, and they can come back in November for the presidential general election. They will be back, they just gotta start, they just gotta grab signatures again, that's all they gotta do, it's not that hard. And more people are voting in the presidential general election than anything, and it's very likely to pass. In 2018, recreational cannabis did pass in Rochester. So, like I said, there is something you can do. Some of you have my contact, I would love to talk to anyone here and see how we, you know, have a way forward that benefits the community as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd just like to say for the record, it did pass in Rochester, 51 to 49, to make marijuana legal. It was not a vote of to put dispensaries in Main Street. So it's a little different situation. Further comment?
Up.
that benefits the community as a whole. Thank you.
I'd just like to say for the record, it did pass in Rochester fifty-one to forty-nine to make marijuana legal. It was not a vote of to put dispensaries in Main Street. So it's a little different situation. Further comment?
Uh, my name is Rick Zapella. I live, uh, eight twenty-five West Fourth. I'm not a proponent or against, um, use of marijuana. I personally don't, don't use it, but I don't judge anybody if they do. It's legal, you know, not a big deal. I, I just had a couple of questions and maybe discussion points, but has anybody been in contact with this group and maybe tried to sit at a table with them and negotiate, uh, maybe a better solution than what clearly I think is going to be a net negative for the city, considering where they want to locate them at? So, I mean, have we gone forward at all and said, hey, why don't we come into the city, you know, and, and, and talk about, maybe there's a better option instead of just leaving us powerless and leaving, and making them out to be like a pariah? And so that's, that would be a suggestion that I would have is, is, you know, instead of having a war.
Right, it's, and I, I agree, but it's too late for that. It is on the ballot now.
Right, no, no, no.
Right, and they didn't, they did not talk to us about it.
No.
Right. Yeah, and I, I get, I get, I get the fact that it's on the ballot. And I don't know what sort of business, you know, arrangements they've made already. I'm sure there's some and, and some commitments made, but, um, you know, it, it seems like there, there, there could be or should be ways that we could, uh, you know, help out or allay some of the concerns by, you know, some, some residents of the city. So by having some dialogue with these folks. So that's all, that's all I got to say.
Thank you. Thank you. Quickly?
I'd like to add, if you do consider an ordinance, um, they would not be able to come back next year or any other year if you have an ordinance enacted. So right now, what potentially could happen, you could potentially have two ordinances if you, um, opt in now. But like I said, the industry who want to participate on South Street or Letica, wherever you want to put them, would fight this.
Thank you.
Mark Sarah? Yeah, I just wanted to mention, um.
Can you give us your address, please?
Oh, yeah. Fifty-five Perry Dale Street, Rochester Hills, Michigan, four eight, three oh six.
Thank you.
Yes. I just wanted to mention, um, to this gentleman's point about Letica or, or, you know, the industrial areas, Nick, um, I thought did a great job at the meeting mentioning that all these, all the traffic, even if you tried to put it in the industrial spots, would not work. He said, it's just, it's just not a good idea. We just do not have that kind of, um, ability to do that in our city.
Thank you. Ms. Turner, last comment? Oh, Councilmember Sage, you have one more?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I actually have a question for the city attorney. So if this fails, would, what would be the cadence that they could come back getting the requisite signatures to put it back on a ballot?
So typically, your, a failed charter amendment has to wait two years. Now, you, you know, crafty draftsmanship would suggest that they would come up with a different one that could then be turned around. So they would have to meet the, the petition requirements again. So they could come back if it fails. And I would disagree, if I can be, um, I, I would disagree with the, the statement that if it, if the city passes an ordinance, they can't come back because that's not accurate. It's not like a normal charter amendment where if the city council, um, puts, um, decides to adopt the same one, then it wouldn't go on there. But this, the charter amendment with the, uh, the Marijuana Act, it's, if the petition comes in, the statutory petition comes in, it does go on the ballot. So I just wanted to make that statement as well.
Thank you. Last comment. Ms. Turner, did you want to comment again?
Hello?
Yep, last comment?
We officially public now?
Yes, well, yeah, we're, um, you have any more comments on the, on the marijuana dispensaries?
No, I still say no.
Okay, so then we're going to hold off on that?
Call me back.
Okay, so then.
Yep.
Well, now that's that done, we can just cancel the meeting, right? All right, so next on the agenda is under public comment is presentation of the Bill La Puma Community Spirit Award to two recipients. DDA Director Christie Tavaro?
Good evening, council. So as you may recall, last year, the DDA created the Bill La Puma Community Spirit Award in honor of Bill La Puma, owner of La Puma's Corner Island, which is beloved, and everyone knows all about La Pumas and how Bill, when you would walk in there, he made you feel like family. And so we decided to create this award in his honor. Tony La Puma, his son, has graciously served on the committee that has reviewed the applications. Last year was the first year that we awarded, and we had two recipients last year because Tony, we had just, it was, as many people say, an embarrassment of riches. So many great applications. This year was not any different, and so Tony also picked two people this year. So if you'll indulge me, I have a brief paragraph to read about each of our recipients, and I'd love for them to come up, say a few words, and then if we could get a few pictures with council, that would be great. So first on our list is Mr. Paul Hague. Paul has been in business for fifty years in downtown Rochester. Over the years, he's been a leader, actively involved in supporting community events and organizations, including Paint Creek Center for the Arts, Leader Dogs for the Blind, Neighborhood House, OPC, Rochester Rotary, just to name a few. He's a long-suffering member of the DDA Board, also acting as the DDA Board's PSD Board Liaison and the Business Development Committee Chairman. Every year, he does a little something extra with his amazing holiday decorations on his building during the big bright light show. Paul is generous, both his time and talents, always being the first to offer creative ideas and solutions. Our community is better because Paul is a part of it. And then secondly, our second recipient is Ms. Linda Ray. Linda has a passion and desire to share what a wonderful community Rochester has become. For the last forty-five years, she has embodied serving, loving, and supporting the greater Rochester community. Linda is a constant supporter of downtown events, including movies in the moonlight, trick or treat downtown in the Halloween Fest, festival trees, and many more. She is also committed to supporting the local businesses, featuring them on her social media channels, as well as creating creative partnerships to promote their products and services. Linda and her family are part of the fabric of our community, and we are so fortunate that they choose to call Rochester home. So if I could invite Paul and Linda to the podium, if you wanted to say a few words, then maybe we could get some photos with council, if that's okay?
Oh, gosh, you know, I am really honored. This is, I've got a lot of acronyms in my life, and this is one of four that I cherish. And I really thank you for the honor of it. Although so many people deserve this award. So many people downtown and so many people on my team alone, such as Paul over there, deserve this award as well, but I'm really glad you chose me.
Well, very glad I've been chosen, and I feel that Rochester is my home. I've lived in five different states. I love living here. You know, the minute I came to Rochester, Michigan, I said, geez, I think I like this place. And I bought a house for twenty-two thousand dollars, borrowed two thousand dollars from a friend of mine, got that done, and then started business over fifty years ago on Main Street, which then has grown and grown. And I've given back, and Rochester's always given very much to me and to my business. I've been very happy to give back in any way I can with Chamber of Commerce, with the DDA, with any other of the organizations around town. We're always there to give a little, and hopefully it will help someone. Thank you.
Everybody.
Should we move?
Can we all get in here?
Yeah.
All right, I'll get the last picture, so look at this group over here, and then I'll get the last picture for.
And then we want to come up and be with you in a photo?
Okay.
Where's Mark? Mark, you want to jump in there?
If you may.
It's Linda's show, I just live here.
Just do Linda's show.
Did you forget what side you're on?
Not good with the phones.
All right, thank you. We'll continue the meeting. Uh, Councilmember Albrecht had a comment.
Uh, thank you, thank you, mayor. Just I wanted to, when, when I heard Christie's remarks about Tony making a difficult decision, that wasn't a difficult decision. Those were the two right people. You know, when you think of events that happen in this downtown, Paul and Linda are always behind him, whether it's movies, movies in the moonlight, whether it's Fire and Ice, you know, Paul decorating his store, Rochester posed, I could go on and on. I worked with Paul for nine years on the DDA. He was always an avid contributor and continues on after I came on city council. Linda and her team, just everything they do, the coloring books, all the, all the things that you do for, for the community. You know, Bill La Puma was, was an amazing man. You know, I always remember going in there and counting his little change in his little thing and putting them in the, in the coin rolls. But he would be, as is Tony and everybody who witnessed this tonight, and everybody here on city council, would be very proud of the recipients this year. And, and thank you for all you do for the city and making Rochester your home.
Councilmember Trent?
Um, yes, I would like to say something. I do not know Linda Ray personally, but I do know she's done a lot for the city, and I know that you deserve the award. But what I will say is I've known Paul Hague since I moved to this town, and my husband knew him before he was married, so the history is long. And they used to eat breakfast together at some restaurant on, on Main Street, uh, north of town. Paul was my first client. He was, Rochester gave me a chance, and he was the first one to give me a chance. And he worked and, and I, he was a client of mine for about thirteen, fourteen years. I will always be grateful for that, um, and among all the other things that Paul has done. And even our daughters were friends as well. So thank you, Paul, for everything that you have done for this city. I've admired you for years, and thank you for having faith in me that I could, uh, own my own company and make a living at it.
Thank you. Okay. Ms. Turner, did you have one more comment before we move on?
Hello?
Yep, we're here.
Good. I'm sorry I tuned in so, too early, but congratulations to everybody.
Thank you.
I have a comment about the intersection at Parkdale and Romeo.
Okay.
Was on vacation when they milled and filled Ross Road up to Parkdale. Had I known it was going to happen that soon, I would have put in back then. But there needs to be a right turn lane from Romeo onto Parkdale. Is there any way, when you're doing the mill and fill on Parkdale, that you can make that happen on the north side? I realize there's curving on the south side. And the light there, I think it happened when Twenty-three Mile and Avon Road were being detoured into Rochester, that they made that light at Parkdale, turning left onto Romeo Road really long. I've been here forty years, and that does, that has changed since, in the last year. So I'm wondering if those can happen. Also, there wasn't a car going straight onto Romeo Road off of, I wanted to go right, and there was enough room for me to turn right on bread. But the bushes on the south side of Romeo Road really need to be trimmed. That whole area needs to be trimmed. You can't even see the curb, how bad it is. So that's my comment, and I'm wondering if anybody at the city can do anything about that.
Thank you, Ms. Turner. Mr. City Manager, would you like to comment?
The bushes, absolutely. Every year, we work with the owners and they cut them back, but it's a really limited right of way there. And again, it would have to meet warrants. Certainly willing to look into it, but I believe that it's, uh, really tight there. But bushes, absolutely agree. Every late summer, we have to get to that property owner and have them cut them back as it gets a little bit done. But I will, um, look into it and get back to Ms. Turner.
Thank you. Next on to the approval of the minutes, a consideration of minutes, the regular meeting of September eleventh, two thousand and twenty-three.
Still moved.
Motion by Councilmember Peterson, support by Councilmember Albrecht.
No, that was Sage.
I'm sorry. Councilmember Sage? Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Gould? Yes. Peterson?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Thank you. Next, we have approval of the consent agenda, and they all look like a lot of fun. First is review and approve the fiftieth, fiftieth annual line job celebration. Next is a trick or treat parade event. Next is the two thousand and twenty-three Kris Kringle Market Event. And the last one is the rah rah heroes versus villains fun run.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Councilmember Peterson?
Support.
Support by Councilmember Trent. Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Gould? Yes. Peterson?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Thank you. There is no old business or table items. There are no public hearings. There's no legislative deliberations. Next is report in regular business is a consideration request to authorize Bowen, 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 paving ink to complete a mill, two-inch mill and fill on sections of the east and west downtown alleys. Mr. DPW Director Allen, Alec, welcome.
Sorry, I've got Allen, Eric, Alex. It's been my life, sorry. So I'm here, council. In front of you, I've got a proposal to do a two-inch mill and fill on sections of the downtown east and west alleyways. I'm in your packet, a map of the proposed section, so it wouldn't be the entirety, but the, the worst of the sections from University down to First Street. So we reached out to four different companies and got three quotes back. Bowen Paving was the lowest at fifty-seven thousand, five hundred and twenty-seven dollars. The goal here is to get this work done before the holiday season begins, and then we would go in and do striping, once it's all completed, the entire length of the alleyway, previously to, I believe, what, like I said, is in the past, there's been red striping down there for pedestrian walkways and that sort of thing.
Councilmember Albrecht?
Oh, yeah, just a couple, thank you, mayor. Couple of questions, Alec. I know we have Rochester posed coming up and other kinds of things. When would this be done so it doesn't interfere with some of our downtown events that are already on the calendar? And how long would it take?
Yeah, we don't have a schedule right now. You know, it's pending approval from this body. It shouldn't be, I mean, obviously, we'd work, work around events. We're not trying to interfere with anything. Something like this, I imagine, a couple of days for milling, and then one, maybe two days for paving.
I would just, again, if you'd just work with Christie and city administration to, to, uh, make sure that it's done expeditiously and not interfere with all the good things we do. With that, I'd like to make a motion to.
I just, one last thing. Only thing that may take some time is we were going to try and work with some of the adjacent property owners, um, if they wanted to, um, kind of piggyback and get their parking lots done, that sort of thing. We aren't going to want to deter the project, but we would like to work with adjacent property owners, too.
Okay. Mayor, if I may, I'd like to make a motion to approve Bowen Paving to complete a second, uh, to two-inch mill and fill on sections of east and west downtown alleyways for up to an amount of fifty-seven thousand, five hundred and twenty-seven dollars.
Motion by Councilmember Albrecht? Support. Support by Councilmember Gould. Discussion, uh, Mayor Protem Salvia?
A quick question. I don't see a general ledger number here, so I'm assuming this is DDA budget?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
My apologies, that's, this is my part.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yeah, thank you, mayor. So, um, I'm glad Christie's here. Just in case, so how are we going to notify everyone going to and from, especially from parking structure and that, especially on this side? Because I know it's so heavily trafficked through there. there and the amount of delivery trucks going through there. I mean, how is that going to be handled?
So, well, I guess a two-pronged approach. We'll be working with the contractor to help with signage and pedestrian detours and really make it known that we're being done and directing people where we want them to walk to. And then I'll hopefully work with Christie to use her extensive email communications to let businesses know intended days for work and any plans that we need them to follow.
DDA Director.
Regarding deliveries, because we've done this before, when we have the alleys that are blocked, what we do is we actually work with the city to block parking spaces on Main Street temporarily and then allow people to actually, especially with the bigger trucks for the restaurants, that they can actually do their deliveries from Main Street. We'll just need as much notice as we can because a lot of times, the restaurants try to reach out to their delivery people ahead of time so they don't try to get down the alley and then realize that they can't. Also, Fourth Street can be utilized as well as Walnuts, depending on the location of where the closure is at the time.
Councilmember Peterson.
So the only thing I found before is because I was in the corner building, working a lot. And if you don't block off the actual university to where they know there's no, because where the barricades were before, people were already turning and it was too hard. Because, okay, all right.
Catch it.
All right, thanks.
Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Bixson.
Yes.
Salvia.
Yes.
Albrecht.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Sage.
Yes.
Trent.
Yes.
Thank you. Next is a consideration request to authorize DC Buyers Company to complete repair work on the west parking deck. Mr. Alec.
So last year, the city had Fish Pick Engineering complete a condition assessment report on both parking decks, the east and west parking deck. The reports came back that both, both decks are in good condition. However, there were lots of recommendations for preventative maintenance works to be done. So the city's now, or city staff is in the process of identifying which work we'd like to start with and create our plans to, to chip away at that work over the next few years. You look at the decks now, they look in really great shape. That's exactly the time where you want to start doing preventative maintenance because decks can be a money pit and snowball very quick. So it's definitely something we wanted to get on top of. This was an item we talked about at the last Parking Adviser, Parking Authority Advisory Committee meeting, apologize, last week. And so we've reached out to three different companies for this work. DC Buyers Company was the lowest bid at ninety-eight thousand, six hundred and eighty-eight dollars. A lot of this preventative, preventative maintenance work is concrete cracking, joint sealing, waterproofing, and little plumbing work. So nothing hugely substantial, but just things that need to get done over time.
Council. Councilmember Sage.
Thank you, Mr. Alec. So the request here is just for the west parking deck. So that was the priority? There was nothing required for east?
Correct. Yeah, this would be just for work on the west parking deck.
Is there work required for east as well?
Yes. They're just, we're be doing a multi-year approach. And so this is the first bite of the apple.
Councilmember Albrecht.
Just a follow-up question. I know you have a GL number on here, but is, would this come out of the parking fund? Or is that what this, the, okay, so-
Yeah, that GL is the same GL for parking lot maintenance, parking deck maintenance.
Okay. So just like the first one, it's going to be paid out of DDA budget that's coming out of the parking fund?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Your motion?
I can make a motion to approve DC Buyers to complete repair work on the west parking deck for a total of ninety-eight thousand, six hundred and eighty-eight dollars, Mayor.
Support. Motion by Councilmember Albrecht, support by Councilmember Sage. Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Bixson.
Yes.
Salvia.
Yes.
Albrecht.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Sage.
Yes.
Trent.
Yes.
Got it.
Thank you.
We have a receipt of the check register. If there's any questions. Now, received report from the various boards and commissions. First is a report from the City Beautiful Commission. Councilmember Gould.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. We did meet on September thirteenth. A couple of highlights of the meeting, we will have a new member joining us, Jessica Klausser, coming in October. I would have a special guest, one Aiden King, who's a longtime resident who is starting to put together some plans for a memorial garden near the Lions' Glove Building, perhaps with a plaque. She's taken this idea back and is, is looking into some potential funding mechanisms for that. The Rochester Pollinators gave a report. The native plant sale is underway, or-
It's over.
It's over. Okay, that was going on.
Successful.
The Southern Wet Meadow Enhancement is ongoing, which is in the park as well. Rain barrels has been a hot topic of discussion for the group lately. And there's a plan now, still working on the plan, but where the pollinators would perhaps purchase the rain barrels. And the City Beautiful will handle all the paperwork and applications and things, but that process is still being developed. We got a very nice update by DPW from Alec and Nick on projects, construction projects in the city. The City Council did go on a tour of the water facilities, which was really cool and much appreciated by all in attendance. There are five more benches coming from Nick's outstanding salesmanship. And we were updated on the outside of City Hall, which looks so nice. If you haven't had an opportunity to go out there and look at it, it looks really great. And the two new boxes, the boxes for the ballots and the, and the boxes for bill paying, which are, which are very nice. And for the next coming year, we're still talking about art for the park, mainly for sort of some art, maybe some movable art for around the Kiwanis Pavilion. And we finished up with Jeremy giving us an update on the park's master plan and talking about getting all that public feedback from the QR codes and everything. I think most of us probably have had an opportunity to do that. So that's it. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Next is a receipt of a report from the Infrastructure Committee Bus Tour.
Take it. So be quick. You've already given the highlight. We enjoyed a bus tour of the city's water system. Probably notably, we all observed that there were no major infrastructure or spending needs there. It looked to be in great condition. Although, interestingly, over the next few years, we will likely need to paint our water tower. So that can be a topic for us to consider. Do we need a color change on our water tower?
That's a big decision.
It is.
Thank you, Mayor Protam. I just wanted to give a shout out to Cory, who gave the tour from the Water, Water Department. He is a wealth of information and gave his history of it. We, we went and looked at the old reservoir and, and everything else. It truly was an enjoyable bus tour. And I think all of us left with the same impression of we're in good hands in, in Rochester with our water.
And I would say it is very hard to find that place.
Good.
Maybe that's a good thing. Next is a report from the Pink Creek Trailway Commission. Councilmember Sage.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A positive update on the southeast property, which is located on the trail spur near Bloomer Park. The Trust has approved the project design and is now, the, the trail has now signed a contract with AEW as the project managers for this. So they will, AEW will then submit invoices for approval through the trail. The trail will then go to the Trust. The Trust will pay AEW. I'm not certain yet on the timing. They may be able to get it done this year. I guess I would defer to administration. Have we heard anything?
No, I, I bet you it's next spring.
Okay.
It's possible.
Okay. Yes.
Councilmember Sage, is, is there a design concept, anything we could see? I don't think I've seen any pictures or I have no visual of, of what this could look like.
It's an observation deck. But we can get you some, some pictures, sure.
Thank you. Next is, next is a report from the Downtown Development Authority.
Uh, yes.
Councilmember Trent.
Yes, I attended last Wednesday's nine, nine twenty, two thousand twenty-three, their regularly scheduled meeting, a monthly meeting. There were two reports, several reports. The Rochester Regional Chamber reported that they are having their Sunrise Pinnacle Awards on October sixth. It's usually heavily attended, and they honor local businesses with awards. The Historical Commission reported that the Heritage Festival had a good attendance, and they're going to work on new ideas as they, for next year. The Principal Shopping District said that ninety-seven percent, there's ninety-seven percent occupancy rate in downtown Rochester, and that's a good thing. The several events are coming up, events. The first one is posed on October fifth, Heroes versus Villains. You don't want to miss that. Their posed events are so clever. Each, it was cleverly done. Businesses show their creativity. The downtown businesses show a lot of creativity, actually. And currently, the Taste of Fall is going on until October sixteenth. And that is, our local restaurants have a lot of specials going on, and don't miss that. And along with that, after you eat your dinner and have maybe a drink or not, non-alcoholic or alcoholic, take the magical mural tour. It's all over town and it's, and it's absolutely a wonderful tour to take. They've got murals all over town, even down to the, in the park. Especially, yeah, they're really nice, really nicely done. We have a lot of talented people around Rochester. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, a report from the Ra Ra. Councilmember Albrecht.
Thank you, Mayor. I've got a few things today. We had a very robust meeting on September twentieth. We welcomed four new staff members. Monica Drohan is now in charge of our Performing Arts Dance and Fitness Area. Matt Burgess is in charge of Sports and Events. And Kelly Homekey is in charge of Adaptive Services. These were all replacement positions for people who'd left over the last three or four months. Then we also welcomed Katie Walker as Recreation Coordinator. This is a new position to help with registrations and birthday parties, all which have been doing very well over the last year. As I always report on registration revenue, we've always had, we're, we're beating last year, but this is the first month we dipped below twenty nineteen. We are four hundred and thirty-four less registrations this year versus twenty nineteen. Again, that's pre-COVID. You might ask why? A couple reasons. One is the impact of the dance program, which was pretty robust back then, and we're rebuilding right now. And secondly, last year and in prior years, we, we ran cross-country a new sport, and Rochester Community Schools has taken that back over. So that's impacted our numbers, not only in registration, but in revenue. Again, we are, our revenue through August, these are all through August, are one point two, one million, two hundred and thirty-six thousand versus last year, one million, one hundred and fifty thousand. We will be putting additional money into the, into their, our fund, reserve fund. But again, it's a little bit lower than twenty nineteen when we're at one point three, nine-two million. Number four, summer camps. Summer camps were outstanding this year. We had one thousand nine hundred and sixteen participants versus a five-year average of one thousand twenty-one, or eighty-eight percent increase in summer camps. So we are going to continue to add more camps next year, and that's really been a, a big winner for us, both serving our residents that use Ra Ra and in terms of registration and revenue. We finally are going to have air conditioning in the fieldhouse, just in time for our holiday market later this year. Sam Hunt, our Assistant Director, was added to the Leadership Greater Rochester Group in twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four. So that'll give him great experience, exposure to a lot of things that will help him in his role. We, and finally, we added a youth golf program, which will be indoors. We've got clubs and, and where they can tee off, and it sold out for six-to-ten-year-olds, eleven, fourteen-year-olds within a few hours. So that's a new program. Maybe it'll help offset some of the cross-country revenue and registrations we lost. So again, a very robust meeting, and that's it, Mayor.
Thank you. Next is a report from the Parking Advisory Committee. I will handle that. We had a meeting one, and we talked about the thing we just voted on. We also talked about ongoing maintenance in the whole parking system, and we're, you know, trying to budget for that. I think the big thing was, and we had a very good presentation from the police chief, on the parking deck gate system needs to be replaced. And there's a lot of issues with that. And it seems like the main issue is that when people put money into the machine, as opposed to credit cards, it's messing up the machine. So there was a recommendation from city staff to use, only for the parking decks, to use credit cards only. And many other cities in Birmingham and things, it's now credit card only. And I think it was twenty percent of, only twenty percent uses cash in the parking garage. So there was a unanimous suggestion to City Council to go with credit cards only in the parking decks only. Mr. City Manager, did you-
That's exactly, just go cashless. And we confirmed all the other towns. And Chief George, is it tomorrow you're meeting with the other one, or?
I already got for today.
It was today. Okay, so we've got our existing group and then another group that we, Anthony met, and we were comparing the two, and we'll bring back a whole recommendation.
And I think, and it's, of course, it's expensive. It's in the three hundred thousand dollar range, but there is money in the, in the Parking, Parking Committee budget to pay for that.
Correct.
Councilmember Trent?
Just a question. And it may sound silly, but, so, do they all, three, two of them both have to be replaced, or both of them?
Both.
Can't they just disable the coin part? Can they just say, you know, does not work?
Yeah, it's the back, it's the, the backend computers. It's, it's six, seven years old and it's not supported anymore. So Microsoft shuts it off October thirty first, basically.
And the chief also said, just a byway of comment, that it's continually breaking down, where the police are having to make multiple, multiple trips over there daily to try to fix it and things. And this newer system is, is not going to have as many problems. Councilmember Albrecht.
All right, a couple of things, just to follow on to that. Sounds like the Parking Authority made a good decision. We may want to, and you probably already thought of this, have some signage going in that going forward, credit cards will not be, will only be accepted whenever the date goes through. Then secondly, I know that we've, we've had, Councilmember Peterson has talked about some of the use of the parking decks not for parking. And I was wondering if that came up, and if there's been any discussion as to better patrolling on, I don't know if you said both parking decks, Anne, or if it was just one or the other, to control skateboarding and gathering and loitering and all those things. If that came up, or if the chief is doing anything on that.
So it did come up, but we've already, we, we have more of a presence there. I don't think you've seen them since you brought it up.
No, no, not at all.
I think they've stopped, so. They just needed a little bit of a new age. Thank you.
Plus the bad weather will help, Karen. Mayor Protam, Salvia.
Just one more question on, on this potential parking change. I understand we have to fix the system so it works, but I thought we were also looking at spanning the globe of what is the newest, coolest, best parking system? How, how do we want to do that? Is that something that, we, we can't get that answer before we spend the money, and we have to spend the money before we get that answer?
So we did that. So there's kiosks, there's all these card readers. So we went through every single, our recommendation is to stick with our system, with the gate. We don't have, we can't change the entry points to, to load them. So the problem with the way our decks were designed, if you go to, a lot of them in Detroit will say, and the gross point was the same, you drive in deep into the structure before you use your card. Here, you're stacked on the road. You can't have that be the point where someone has to decide what to do. There would be, if we get to the system, there will be a giant banner on the top there, cash only before you ever get into that queue. We did that before. Cashless, I'm sorry, yeah. Cash, cashless, card only, yeah. So we can't redesign them. We looked at places that have you walk in, find your, you, you paint the number of space, you paint the numbers on the parking spaces you go in, then you go to a kiosk pay, swipe this. Nobody likes those systems that have been using them. So Northville tried it, and now they're going back to our kind of system. So we looked at kiosks and, and just park mobile, all these things. And it's so confusing, and we only have those two decks. It's just not, it's overwhelming to go through all that. So our recommendation was, the system works now, just go cashless, and it'll be much more efficient. So. We even talked about, is it worth paying somebody to be ambassador and take your money? A flat fee of five dollars per gig per hour. So we went through all of that as a staff and still, after all that, visiting numerous places, came back with the same. In our, for us, those two decks are partly designed, mostly designed, because you just can't change how deep you get into those before you turn around. So that was our recommendation.
Councilmember Peterson.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So, but I think there's two things. One, I want to thank the chief and that for addressing those issues at the parking deck. But two things, I think that the parking deck is totally separate from other conversations that I thought we should be going in a different direction where we have the actual parking lots. And I think that's where some of these other systems could work more efficiently than what we have, because they have, and some of the bigger cities worked really well. I know our parking decks, I think- because they have, and some of the bigger cities worked really well, I know our parking decks, I think that they're fine, I think having the gate there is safer anyhow, because right now, you have even the skateboarders that want to skate in around through there, but making it just credit card only, I think that's, that's the smartest thing to do, because I've been there, and I know how many times I've watched them having to call the police all the time to be able to get in and out.
So, if I may, Mr. Mayor, so today, actually, we went down to Amtramic, and went in one of their lots, and you just walk up to a little thing, swipe it, say what your license plate number is, so, we talked about in our other lots, we talked about that pack, that we will look at other alternatives, absolutely, so, it just didn't work for the decks, but if we decide to not make the elevator lot free, we'd be nuts to put back individual meters that failed before, so, yes, the answer is, we'll look at other options for different locations, absolutely.
Right.
Very good. Is there any further public comment? The audience. Next onto General Miscellaneous, Mr. City Manager.
Just two things, Carl came in, Carl Mayer from Parks came in today and gave me the Spongy Moth Report that we get every year, right on, so three years in a row, don't even have to have treatment, so, we're in that nice cycle. Nature will change, it happened up north, we had three good years, and then a bad year, it can change everything, but we're in a good mode, right now, we don't have to treat, then we had low egg masses, and the bacteria that was already on the trees is taken care of, so that's great news, and then just second, I know, somebody, Mark, I think you talked about Leadership Rochester, so Jeremy Peckins and Brian Dunzio, our deputy clerk, we enrolled them, and Maggie was kind enough to pay for them to do that, because we've been a good supporter, and she said, this one's on us, Nick, so, those two are on us, so they're participating now, and we've got, virtually, our whole staff's been through there now, so, it's a very worthwhile project. You know, we have a day here, I have a day of economic development, so, then I go with Mayor Barnett to his place, and we do one together, so, we're actively involved, it's a great program, and we're happy that Jeremy and Brian are committed to it, so.
Well, good luck, Jeremy.
Yep.
Anything further? Madam Clerk?
Absentee ballots are going out this Wednesday, and next meeting you'll have on your agenda, Appointment of Election Workers, and I just want to share with you, it's been a lot in the press about election workers quitting and leaving, we haven't experienced that, and in fact, when I sent them out the letter saying, give me, you know, these are the nine days, I need early voting, let me know, I, they exceeded the number of, I had more than I needed for every single day, and twice the number on most days, so, they're really meeting the moment and exceeding it, and I think we're in a good place, and I'm confident we will do well.
Mr. City Attorney?
Nothing, thank you.
Councilmember Gould?
Yeah, I would just say thank you to Nick, and Alec, and Jason, and Cory for the water tour thing, that was, that was really neat, kind of geeked out, I had no idea that was there, and learned about the DPW grounds and everything, so it was really nice to see all that, I hadn't had a tour before, so, that's it, thank you.
Mayor Protem Salvia?
Nothing else to add, thank you.
Councilmember Sage?
Only one thing, sir, a humble request from my colleagues to provide a excused absence for the September eleventh meeting, as I was out of town on business.
Motion?
Motion by Councilmember Peterson, support by Councilmember Albrecht, Madam Clerk, the role, please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Thank you, Councilmember Albrecht?
Nothing to add, your honor.
Councilmember Trent?
Yes, I'd like to thank DPW, Alec, Colin, and Jeremy for having the Elizabeth Park, Street Park Visioning Session on Saturday from twelve to three, I stopped by, they were very happy, they said it was quite well-attended, and they were getting a lot of good ideas, I do know some people from that area, and they are very pleased that they could participate, and I am looking forward to the outcomes.
Thank you, Councilmember Peterson.
Thank you, Mayor, so, I too enjoyed the water tour, so thank you very much, and thank you for keeping the new DPW building looking awesome, I'm very, very pleased with that investment that we made. And then, I know we spoke about this earlier today, but everyone that I received emails from, or anything regarding the marijuana situation, said we didn't know anything about it, so, I want to, Community Lifestyles did post something on August twenty-eighth in the newspaper, but instead of putting something very important on the front page, it was back on page five in the bottom corner, and I think that, you know, just doesn't help when you have residents who really wonder, so I would just hope that, when they listen to and watch our meetings, that they will take the foresight next time to put important issues on the cover, so people don't feel surprised, and make us look like we didn't, we did something that we shouldn't have done, so, and that's it, thank you.
Thank you, I would just also thank the DPW for the tour, it was very interesting, I hadn't been out there in a long time. Also, I'd like to thank Alec and his staff for putting the park back together after Art and Apples, it looks great, you can't even tell it was there, so, thank you, Alex, to you and your team, and just a fun thing, I told a couple people here, if you drive down Terry Street, there is a twenty-foot tall skeleton.
Oh, yes, is that where it is?
And the skeleton is holding a vote no on the marijuana sign, so you might want to check that out just for fun.
I forgot something.
Go ahead.
Marilyn and I attended the OPC rebranding, and then I know Nancy was there for the ribbon cutting of the sign, and I just want to say thanks to Renee and everybody for all that hard work, and her staff of, you know, redesigning that, rebranding that, and putting it out there, I think they did a great job, and it was really nice to be there to celebrate.
Mr. Mayor, can I just do one more, Jason just reminded me of, had an extremely successful, the most well-attending Clinton River cleanup ever on Saturday, so I should thank Alec and Jason for doing the Elizabeth Park thing, but, so they went to there in the morning, then they went to the Elizabeth Park in the afternoon, but, we actually had people complain there's not enough trash to pick up along the river, so that's a good thing, so, yeah, shout out to the Clinton River folks for doing all that, too.
You missed a lot of football on Saturday, but we appreciate you selling out for the team.
A lot of losses.
There you go, and then we have a request to go into closed session, discuss union negotiations with the thought of coming back out to public session, is that correct?
Correct.
Do we have a motion for that?
Yes.
Motion by Councilmember Peterson?
Support.
Support by Mayor Protem Salvia, Madam Clerk, the role, please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Thank you, we'll take a five-minute break.
Anytime.
Okay. So we are back in public session, Councilmember Albrecht?
Thank you, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the TA signed by city management and the IAFF Union Leadership dated nine, six, two thousand and twenty-three, as was presented in the closed session.
Motion by Councilmember Albrecht, support by Councilmember Peterson, discussion. Madam Clerk, Madam Clerk, the role, please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Thank you, everybody, and meeting adjourned, have a good night.